All right. Okay, good evening, everyone. If I can start by having, make sure everybody turns off their cell phones. That would be appreciated. And I will check that. And we will first start with Mr. Wax with the invocation. If everybody will rise, please.
Yeah, I thank you for everyone being able to be here today. We ask for wisdom in decisions we make. We ask for guidance for all future endeavors. Ask for safety on our way homes. We honor you and bless your name. In Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, if everyone will indulge us for just a minute. This is a new term, so we do have to do a little housekeeping and elect our chair and Do we have any nominations for chair?
I nominate Ms. Kathy Long.
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Annie, take a vote, please.
Mr. Engler?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Wax?
Yes.
Mr. Dana?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
And Ms. Long?
Abstain, but yes. Yes, I suppose. Okay, now if we could have the, for co-chair, any recommendations?
I nominate Ms. Sarah Ferris.
I'll second that.
Okay, if we can have a vote, please, Ms. Annie.
Mr. Engler?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Mr. Wax?
Yes.
Mr. Dana?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
I'll abstain, too.
Ms. Long?
Okay, that takes care of that. So, we'll call this meeting to order. The first item is, of course, roll call.
Mr. Engler?
Here.
Mr. Clemmons?
Here.
Mr. Watts?
Here.
Mr. Gidry? Mr. Wax?
Here.
Mr. Dana?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Ferris?
Here.
Ms. Long?
Okay, we'll move on to the adoption of the minutes from the meeting on the previous meeting, January 4th, and we're going to have to table that item to get a legal opinion because we do not have the members that were present at that time, a quorum for those members, so we'll have to table that item. So, moving on to item seven, we will start, that item has been pulled from the agenda. And move on to item eight, the public hearing for Head of Island Development. We'll open the public hearing. Have anybody representing anyone that?
Yeah.
All right, if you would state your name, please, and write it.
Yes, ma'am. Rudy Simcoe with McLean Taylor. And we prepared the preliminary site plan that I believe you all have before y'all. This development is located at the corner of Highway 22 and Highway 16. It is a 6.6 acre site. It is currently zoned, small neighborhood business, and it was proposing a retail center, or retail, I should say, a retail building with some concrete parking and a boat and RV storage in the rear of the property that would have limestone. We've allocated some room for detention with a pond, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have for it.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You think that the small neighborhood business is the proper zoning for this application?
So, you know, this is, zoning has been a big question on this project, and it's not the first time that it's been before the planning and zoning board. I think it's one of the first ones that have come before with zoning. In August of last year, it came before. There was a question about zoning, if it needed to be rezoned to C1. We then got on the agenda again, and then the planning commission at the time was not able to make a determination. It was sent to council. In January, we, you know, the council was here, I believe Bailey Taylor was here, represented it, and it was voted to go back before the planning commission for, as a public hearing is how it's on there. You know, Head of Island Development.
You've been doing this for six months already, back and forth from committee, commission?
Yes, sir.
So, are you still pursuing the zoning change to C1? I guess that's what I'm not clear on, because I know that came up at the last council meeting, and y'all had come to ask for the C1, and it wasn't so much a, "We don't want to give you the zoning change," it was one, "We want to follow the process that we had just enacted at that council meeting," and so that was why they had punted it back to planning.
Yes.
So, I assume that you guys would still be coming to seek out the C1 zoning change?
So, I think since then, yeah, thank you.
That would be very helpful. What we, in the definition with small neighborhood business, it is to fit whatever's in that area as well. The property right beside this property is the same identical project that is going on. This will also have retail, and the boat storage falls in line with other projects and property that isn't located in that area. Okay. So, it was done administratively in the planning department. Are there any RV hookups that are going to be part of this development, or is this RV storage and just dry boat storage? Okay. Along with like parts and products and stuff for that line of?
That's who we took out.
No type of storage, hookups or anything for RVs or boats, no.
It's sewage for the office building?
Correct, yes.
And nothing else?
Correct.
That's a pretty low spot, pretty wet.
It's been built up and developed. This is a preliminary concept. From here, we'll have to do drainage impact studies to ensure there's viability.
They'll also have to meet the requirements by DEQ and, you know, everything throughout that process, so that should take care of any questions on that.
And there is a business identical to this one that is going to be right beside it? Is that across 16, or it's right next door? One is before you get to into the roundabout, and then it's this.
Have any other questions? And no one else needs to speak. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And I'll call on our engineers to tell us how we stand with you.
All of our comments have been addressed. We would recommend approval. This is just for the preliminary site plan. They still have to do all their studies.
Okay. All right, and planning department? No comments and no attorney comments. Any other comments or questions, members? If anybody would like to make a motion, yep.
You ready for a motion?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Can we take a vote, please, Ms. Annie?
Mr. Engler?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Mr. Wax?
Yes.
Mr. Dana?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move to item number nine. That's Eagles Nest RV and Boat Storage on Highway 16.
How you doing today?
How are you?
Good. Thomas Johnson with Alvin Fairburning Associates, and I'm here today asking for approval of a 60-foot servitude located on Eagles Nest Boat and RV Storage. The servitude is on the east side of the property. Property is adjacent to Livingston Parish District and Recreational Park in that area on Highway 16. It's in Mr. Shaver's council district as well.
Can you tell me what the purpose is for the revocation and relocation?
It's the area that, on that side, is about more valuable than the area that we're actually dedicating. We can get more done in that, you know, as additions go on. I mean, it's 60-foot, and it's a really good area, as where the pond area, you know, is less valuable. Do you mind if I? No, go ahead. The owner, this is the owner.
Dana Rushing, I own, my wife and I own Eagles Nest. Let me spell my name correctly. When I purchased the property, I had to donate or dedicate a 60-foot servitude, and I did not have the layout of how I was going to set up the buildings. I did it under a 1031 exchange, so I had a certain amount of time to do that. As I laid it out, I decided to put the buildings parallel to that east side, which kind of puts it a little bit off of the perpendicular to the highway. But I would like to put additional buildings to the east of the existing ones and put them parallel to that, so I want to move the servitude from that east side to the west side. I've gotten all the letters, the property, the adjacent property owners, nobody's objected to it.
That was my next question. Have you provided those letters to the department?
Yes. Any other questions for me?
I may. Until recently, I sat on the gravity drainage board, and we looked at this property both when the original servitude was issued, and we also looked at the new servitude. It's fine with the gravity drainage work in the area, and we had no objection.
Is it added information?
I have a question. Normally, we ask about, is there any utilities in the old servitude?
All of that's been addressed.
Yes.
I had to get letters from Demco War Two Water.
Did y'all, y'all did that?
Yeah, all the letters. I think it's six or seven letters, and had no objections.
All right, Morgan, do y'all have anything for engineering? No objection, okay. All right. Who else? The commission have any comments? Any motions?
Make a motion to approve it.
Yes, sir.
A vote, please, Annie?
Mr. Engler?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Clemmons? Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Mr. Dana?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Thank y'all. Thank you.
Okay, item number 10. If I pronounce this correctly, Kieran Landry, servitude revocation Cypress Point Lane. Do we have a representative for that?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Hopewell. It's 2112 Old Siney Highway, Zachary. I represent Ms. Landry. She is out of town. She would ordinarily be here. She asked that I attend and answer any questions that you may have. I believe you have the site plan in front of you. There is, in her, in her words, "No public purpose for the revocation. This is an unimproved road." She owns all properties that are contiguous to or that would be served by the proposal that the road would, or the uses for the road, and she is requesting, obviously, that
Questions, anyone?
Be the same, the same question on the utilities on this?
Yes, sir. To my knowledge, there's been no objection.
All been resolved.
To my knowledge, there are no utilities run in this particular little spur, but there has been no objection from any of the utilities.
But you have no utilities in that?
That is my understanding, yes, sir.
Have they attempted to get any letters to clarify, just to?
To my knowledge, they have. They've reached out, obviously, to the utilities, and if they haven't, they will. There is an engineer, obviously, working on this. Ms. Landry would have been here to answer those questions. I know specifically she doesn't have any objection and has so stated, but certainly we've reviewed the ordinance for purposes of the revocation, and she'll comply with whatever's necessary.
They typically have those letters, so it might be something, we have a contingency attached, you know. I'm sorry? Oh, you do? Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I think if they had not had the letters, they probably, it would have gotten to me. I hadn't received anything. I was thinking, no news was good news.
Yeah, okay. We just have to have it on file. So, do we have any other comments by the commission?
You said that she owns all of the lots adjacent to the?
All lots contiguous, and all lots are proposed lot that would be served by it. Yes, sir, that is correct.
It looks like Lot 69 has someone else's name, Vernon in Melba Howell.
69 is not contiguous. 69 should be one lot over. 70, 71, 72, 73, and 74 surround the road. 69 would be served by Cypress Point Lane, it appears. And I do not necessarily say that it needs to be a correction, but it's not the revocation of Cypress Point Lane. It's actually the revocation of River Point Drive, which is essentially just that little spur off of Cypress Point Lane.
The planning department, any concerns? Okay. Anyone else? Any comments or questions? Any recommendations? Or motions?
Need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
If we could take the vote, please, Ms. Annie.
Mr. Engler?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Mr. Dana?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item number 11, S&amp;P Investments Servitude Revocation.
Good evening. Rudy, again. All right, so yes, this is a servitude revocation of a 40-foot private all-purpose servitude. Previously, the land was subdivided into four parcels, broken into four equal squares, and the servitude was allocated to serve the lots that did not have road frontage on Glory Land. They since have changed their mind on how they would like to resub that and give all four lots equal road frontage, so there's no longer a need for this 40-foot servitude to serve those lots. So, that is why we're asking for this revocation. It was, this was originally done back in January of last year. No utilities or anything has been installed there, although we did get the necessary letters, and I believe those have all been given to the parish. Asking for your approval.
All right, planning department? Any issues? Okay. Commission members, any comments or other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
The motion is to approve, okay. All right, can we take a vote, please?
Mr. Engler?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Mr. Dana?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
And moving on to item 12, Access Mechanical Group Final Site Plan on Strawberry Lane.
Yes, this one's me also. This is a previous preliminary site plan that came before the planning commission. It received approval to proceed. We have since done drainage impact study and developed a full set of construction plans so they may be able to construct this industrial park. It's located off of Strawberry Lane, just south of I-12, and it resides in Council District 9. I'd be happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Where your sign is in the dirt?
Am I aware? No, I'm not aware.
The required sign is actually laying down. It's not up.
Has it been, has it failed? Okay, well, I'll reach out to the owners and make sure they get that stood back up.
Any other questions? Morgan, do you have any comments?
All of our comments have been addressed.
Planning?
Objection.
Okay.
I have one question.
All right, Mr. Gerald?
I got a question. Did this development come before the planning commission about a year and a half ago?
Don't exactly know how long ago, but yes, it has previously, for a public hearing.
It come by, it was brought forth as a preliminary site plan, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
But, okay, so this is construction plan. Is this considered the final, the final plans?
Yes, this is the final site plan, and what you have before you is a site geometrics. The construction plans for this development is multiple sheets, you know, with grading in drainage, utility layout, and all the things to serve this building. It, you know, you know, you got, you know, I'd be happy to show you any of them.
No, I just, we haven't normally been looking at construction plans over the years, but it's okay. Just something new, okay? That's all.
Yes, sir. So, that's something that, you know, was changed in the ordinance that, you know, the commission wanted to look at. You know, since things could change through the drainage impact study and things, they wanted to see it again.
As the final site plan, so?
Yes.
And then the? Questions from anyone else?
Is next door to the Pala facility, and then in that area?
To the, to the east, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It sits to the west of it.
Any other questions or comments? Like to make a motion?
Recommend we approve it.
I'll second that.
Ms. Annie, the vote, please.
Mr. Engler?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Mr. Wax?
Yes.
Mr. Dana?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Okay, item number 13, Settlement at Pine Hill, second preliminary plat. This is located on Highway 444.
Yes, ma'am. Think y'all have me for the rest of the night.
I'm saying, I think you're a busy man tonight.
So, yes, Settlement Pine Hill, this is a large lot subdivision. You have the second preliminary plat in front of you. Again, this, the original preliminary plat came before the planning commission. We have since done a comprehensive drainage plan and full development and construction plans, and this second preliminary plat is addressing any allocation of servitudes and any other features there. We're proposing 16 lots that has not changed from the preliminary plat, yeah, from the original preliminary plat, and be happy to answer any other questions.
How are things, Morgan?
All of our comments are addressed.
Okay, all right.
No objection.
No objection, okay. All right, any other commission comments or questions? Do we have any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I second it. Go ahead. I second it.
Vote, please, Ms. Annie.
Mr. Engler?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Mr. Wax?
Yes.
Mr. Dana?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
And Ms. Long?
Okay, number 14, Austin's Customs Final Site Plan Walker South Road.
So, again, this one came before you. This is the final site plan. It's proposing an additional workspace in the rear with some additional gravel parking. It's a 40-by-60-foot workspace. I'd be happy to answer any question.
Why are we here if you've already gotten waivers from the council?
So, waivers for the, which waiver for the council, from the council?
For the fence.
For the fence, okay, yeah, so the fence, yeah, so they did, yeah, they did go to the council for the fence. There's a requirement to have it along the entire border when you're next to residential. They have received a letter from the neighbor stating that he was okay with just 75-foot. They've actually installed 150-foot since, and the reason that we're here is, you know, it's to show y'all the final product.
That looked like me, they went over ahead already. Says here, says here, "The architectural design and drainage impact study are also included."
Are also included.
In the waiver.
In the waiver. Well, the drainage impact study is actually an exemption that's allowed in the ordinance. It's a, the total impurposed areas, less than 20% of the entire site, so you're allowed, if that's the case, you're exempt from having to do drainage impact study. So, that's why that's listed. It actually wasn't a waiver of the ordinance.
This was repurposing of an existing building, was it?
So, there are some existing buildings there, but there are also, it's an additional
Morgan, do you have any comments?
All of our comments have been addressed, and they did meet the requirement to be able to have.
Planning as well, okay. All right, any other comments or questions by the commission? Any motions?
I'll make a motion except.
We made the second.
Who seconded that? Who seconded that?
Who seconded that?
You did it.
If we can call for the vote, please.
Mr. Engler?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Mr. Wax?
Yes.
Mr. Dano?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Okay, item number 15. Juven Garden Plaza, the final site plan on Juven Road.
Similar to some of the previous ones, this is the final site plan. It's a retail building that's located on Juven Road and the corner of Almond Burns Way. We've done a drainage impact study. We've allocated for detention. We've, you know, laid out the parking and everything to serve its intended use, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for anyone?
Is there any, this is just going to be retail leasing space, or is there any intended purpose for it yet?
Yeah, not that I know of.
This temporary road, it's just strictly because the highway's going to be moved back out to the property.
Yeah, so as y'all know, Juven Road is under construction. We've reached out to DOTD, got a permit, you know, so we had to kind of show it in both phases considering which one comes first.
It'll go away when the road gets out, built out.
Yeah.
Yes.
Morgan?
All of our comments have been addressed. Their studies have been completed, and they had no objection.
Okay, okay. Do you have any other questions or comments? Get a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Take the vote, please, Ms.?
Mr. Engler?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Mr. Wax?
Yes.
Mr. Dano?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
And Ms. Long?
Yes.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, before you adjourn, could I say a few words to the new?
Absolutely, please do.
First thing I want to do is take an opportunity to thank each and every one of you for your dedication to be, to serve on this board. It's going to be a hard job, and you already know that, and you have stepped up to the plate, and I really appreciate each and every one of you that has made this move. I would like to maybe make a small suggestion in case y'all want to consider it. For the people back home when they're watching this, it's hard to follow. They don't know the terminology as well as you do, because you've been looking at this for years. I would suggest that maybe it's possible when the agenda item arrives, whether it's one, two, three, or four, or five, Madam Chairman would call on either the planning director or the planning engineer to give a synopsis of what this project is, and it gives you a better opportunity to ask questions. Now you got a little bit of information you have now. You have to look through it at the last minute and try to ask a reasonable question, and you probably got, and I know you do, have way more information than the people at home. So if y'all would consider that suggestion, I think it would make it more transparent for the people at home. Again, a great job, and I really, really appreciate you, and the parish does too. Thank you.
Thank you. Though you failed to announce who you were or sign in, so. I think that's a good suggestion. This is new for the commission to be televised, so I think that's a very valid point, and be prepared. Hey, if we, any parish attorney comments? The review engineer, Ms. Morgan, no comments? Department, planning department?
I didn't think I would ever be speechless, but I've been speechless today. No comment.
All right, anyone, any comments from the commission? I would like to welcome everybody and appreciate, just as our president said, your dedication and commitment to time and efforts to do the best we can to improve our parish. So thank everyone for coming, and I think that's it. We are adjourned.